Thank you. Our first item is acknowledgements and we have none tonight. Next is the consent agenda. Items one through six, one of them is to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 1st. Number two is to approve the warrant claims from April 2nd through April 15th. Number three is to approve the biweekly payroll ending April 6th and paid on April 12th. Number four is to consider and approve appointments to the Business Improvement District Advisory Board of Directors. Number five is to authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with High Tech Security to provide and install security upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant and various city facility, water facilities. And number six is to consider and approve Resolution 2013-10, delegating authority to the city manager to determine actions of industrial disabilities pursuant to Government Code 21173. Is there a motion for approval?
Mayor?
Yes.
On item number five, I'd just like to add, I received an email today and I believe all the council members were copying on that, not sure if you received it or not. It was from Midwest Fall, asking three questions on item number five, and I'd just like to read that into the record and let you know what the answers are to those questions. Questions are, is the project is approved? How will the city pay the $26,000 portion of the security contract?
Mr. Plato, could you just talk a little bit louder into the microphone?
I can.
Thanks.
How will the city pay for the $26,000 portion of the security contract? And where will the money come from to pay the $400 a month? That's question number one. I'm just gonna read the questions and then answer. Will it be from the money collected from the ratepayers? Will this be considered part of the operations and maintenance? The city match for this grant is in the budget and was approved with the budget. The ongoing costs for the operation of the security projects will be budgeted in future budgets. And this project probably won't get implemented and started until the next budget year. Yes, the sewer and water are, the ratepayers are the primary revenue sources for both the sewer and water enterprise funds. This security project is vital to the safety and ongoing reliability of the city's most critical water and wastewater facilities. So, I just...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any council comments?
Only, only on, not on that particular item, but in number three, the consider and approve appointments to the Business Improvement District Advisory Board of Directors. We have some people here for that, and I didn't know if you wanted to pursue that a little bit more detail, so maybe we pull that particular one off?
Okay, we can pull on item four. Sure, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Then we'll have the consent calendar with the exception of item four. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the consent items, one, two, five, and six? Seeing none, you can pull the vote, please.
One, two, three.
One, two, three, five, and six, sorry.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Aneah.
Yes, thank you. Item number four, we'll go back to, and that's consider and approve appointments to the Business Improvement District Advisory Board of Directors. And maybe our...
Billy Kay.
Billy Kay, can come on up and tell us about who you've recommended for the board appointments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would any of them like to speak? No? Any public comment? Yes.
My name's Richard Miles, and I'd like to point out something to this body tonight. Currently Wendy's Salon has a representative. Even though the person that is on the nominee tonight, it's a contract body person, it's a contract person with Wendy's. I believe having two representatives from the same business could be a conflict of interest. I'd like to recommend that you ask bid to find somebody else within the Business Improvement District and bring that nomination back at a future time. The reason I'm saying this, if you go by Wendy's, they have a sticker on their business that says no bid. I think if you have a board made up of yes and no people, you don't get very much accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Okay. Is Ms. Ward here tonight? Ward, I'm sorry. Would you like to say anything? Come on up here. I'm sorry, I pronounced your name wrong. It's Ward.
It's Ward.
Ward.
It's Ward. I go by D., Ward. I just wanted to thank them for inviting me. I'm new to the town. I've been here three years, and I think it's time that we had new and, and different ideas, and maybe we can resolve the problem that's going on. Yes, there is a no bid in the window, but there are private contractors there, and we have one area that is for the hearing, and she is not included in Wendy's business as hairdresser, so the no bid has no bearing on us as, as a whole of the shop, so...
So you're saying the sign, the actual sticker is in her window and not yours?
It's in her window, it's not in our window, yes.
Nice to meet you.
So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just had a question. Mr. Plato or Billy Kay, is there any issue in your bylaws that states you cannot have a board member, more than one board member from the same business?
That is not addressed in the bylaws.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve item number four?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Aneah.
Yes. We'll move on to reports and presentations. Item number seven, we have a presentation this evening on an update on the visitor's center and the visitor's bureau. And Mr. Palmer, welcome.
Thank you. I was told I had an option, I could either sit here or stand.
Sure, as long as you're close to a microphone.
I will. Move on. Councilmember Gastineau, councilmember Shalung, Mayor Aneah, Mayor Protam Holly, Mr. Plato and Mr. Black, thank you for the opportunity to do the presentation tonight and update on this.
Okay. My name's Jeff Palmer. I'm the interim executive director of the Crescent City Del Norte County Chamber of Commerce and the Visitor Bureau. And, you know, we have a terrific resource right in our backyard, and you can see on the front slide here, Redwoods. People come from all over to see the Redwoods, and we really have a treasure here. So why is tourism and the economy linked together, and why is it so important? Well, they come and they spend money. What's not to love about that? If you've seen the Geico commercial with the guy on the motorcycle and money flying off of him, well, when you see an RV going down the road, think of that. Just think of the money flying out of the RV. Well, what does this mean to us? Well, the iceberg effect. If you look at an iceberg, there's very little of the iceberg that's above the ocean. Most of it's below the surface. Now, the iceberg represents above the surface those visitors and those dollars that they spend that we can see directly. But what's below the surface is the money that they may leave a waiter or waitress as a tip, and then that money recirculates into the community. So, really tourism is similar to an iceberg. The amount of money and the impact of it is greater than what you see. Okay, now I'm gonna talk about some destination spending. And what this is, this is the amount of money that's spent by different categories. Now, this is from 2010, and this is from Dean Runyon and Associates. And destination spending is the money that's spent in the county by visitors. And you can see by this graph that in 2010, it was over $100,000, $100 million. So, that's what I mean by the iceberg effect. There's a lot of money being spent that we might not be aware of. Visitor spending by category. I'm ahead of myself here. I missed a slide. Visitor spending at destination, and this is trending from 92 to 2010. And you can see in 2008, '09, and '10, it's been pretty level and not much growth. So, it is still a significant amount of money. That's $104 million right there that is spent by visitors to our area. That includes airfare by people coming in and out of the area and also residents. Okay, now this is visitor spending by categories, and this is in Del Norte County in the year 2010. The majority of the money spent by visitors is in food service and overnight accommodations. And that's a little over 50%. We have 32.3 million in food service and 21.2 million in accommodations. And then we have retail sales, which are primarily souvenirs, gifts, and other items, and that's 17 million. And then arts, entertainment, and recreation. For our county, it would mostly be admission prices to places like Ocean World and Trees of Mystery, possibly the Klamath Jet Boats. And so that brings another 14 million in. Then we have your grocery stores and your local transportation and gas, and then visitor air transportation. Now, what does this mean as far as jobs? Well, 1,700 jobs are generated by the tourism industry, primarily in the lodging industry and food service, where 1,200 jobs are generated. And these are full and part-time jobs, so it includes both. But that's 73.4% of the job force in these areas. And then again, the attractions, 16.6%, roughly 300 jobs, and then 200 in retail. I found this one kind of interesting, is the spending by accommodation type. Private campgrounds, which includes RV parks, is the leader in this category at $34.8 million, which represents 33.7% of the money that comes in. Then we have the lodging, hotel motel, and that's approximately 34 million, and about 33.1%. And then day travel is just people that travel through the area. I don't know why they threw it in with accommodation type unless they're sleeping in their car, but that amount of money is 15.9 million. And then we have private home, and I found that interesting because these are people that come to visit us, the residents, and they spend $13.6 million. So anytime you have a friend or relative come to visit you, they're circulating money into the community. And then public campgrounds is 2.4 million, and vacation homes 2.3. Okay, this shows room sales by jurisdiction in 2011. There is $8.9 million in room sales in Crescent City and $4 million in Del Norte County. We have 175 rooms in the county, and there's 853 rooms in Crescent City. Now, what does that mean in TOT revenue? Well, in 2011, we had $890,600 brought in, and that was a .3% increase over the previous year. And in Del Norte County, it was 319,100. And on this graph, you can see the TOT receipts by the county from '92 to 2011, and you can see where 2007, '08, '09, '10, and '11 pretty much are consistent. And there was a drop nationwide in travel in 2007, 2008, so it's kind of nice to see that didn't fall down right there. And then this is the TOT trends for Crescent City. You can see there is a slight drop in 2008, and then it leveled off in 2009, 2010. Now, I just wanted to show you how Crescent City, Del Norte County compares to Humboldt. You can see where they're leveling '08, '09, and 2010. But then you can see where Mendocino did drop off in 2009, and 2010, and '11. Okay, the visitor's center. Now, the visitor's center is manned by our staff and by volunteers, and I'm just impressed with the wonderful job they do. They're friendly, they're knowledgeable, and they go the extra mile to help the visitors that come through the doors. We get comments all the time about it is one of the most welcoming visitor's centers that people have been to. And they immediately acknowledge the people when they come in and ask them how they can help them, and they share a lot of knowledge and information with them. Now, just for your information, the number of visitors that have been coming through the doors has been going up. In 2009, we had 17,268. In 2010, we had 17,643. In 2011, we had 18,258, and this last year, we had 19,094. So, even though some say that, you know, travel is down, the statistics at our visitor's center keep going up. Now for some examples of marketing. This ad was published in the Grants Pass Daily Courier last Thursday, April 4th, promoting the Tall Ships Festival. It's the ad that's up in the upper right-hand corner, and this ad reached approximately 32,000 people. This ad was in the Medford Mail Tribune, April 12th, promoting the Tall Ships as well. Reached approximately 79,100 people. This ad was placed in the America's Wild Rivers Coast Vacation Guide. A theme that we've been using this year is come see our skyscrapers. And this is distributed from Port Orford down to Oryc, also in the Illinois Valley, Grants Pass, and Medford, and there's 55,000 copies of these distributed. Then we've placed...
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is the website still tracking a response from any of those ads?
We didn't put QR codes in either Tall Ship ads, so we're not tracking those. But any ads that we have that have a QR code, there's one in the Mile by Mile Guide to Oregon, and also in Fish Sniffer. And, yeah, they are tracking those if they have the QR code. Because they're not going to a specific landing page if they don't have the QR code. They're probably going to the homepage or another page that they may be interested in.
Okay. Are we, do you have numbers on that?
Not on the tracking? No, but I can get them to you.
Okay, thanks.
Uh-huh. And then we placed ads in Fish Sniffer Magazine, and we did a combo buy with a banner ad that linked to our website, and we combined that with the print ad, and we did see an increase in the traffic from the Google Analytics where Fish Sniffer was showing up as a referral page. Let me talk a little bit about social media. TripAdvisor in the last year, the usage is up 65%. Facebook was down actually a little bit in 2012, 3.45%. But then if you look at the first quarter of this year, or actually January 1 through April 12th, the usage is up 500% on Facebook, and TripAdvisor is up 12.15. So, I'm seeing a big increase in the use of social media and the use of smartphones and tablets, and we're gonna have to change with the times. This shows mobile and tablet usage. And now this is from a comparison period of January 1, 2011, to December 31, 2011, compared to the prior year, but you can see that mobile usage was up 229%. Use on our website was up 1.78. So, the Visitors Bureau Committee has decided to go ahead and authorize the website to be designed to be mobile-friendly, so people can use them when they're traveling. And that pretty much concludes my presentation.
Still have any comments that you wanted to make?
I appreciate your, your presentation. The statistics are particularly interesting. I have some questions, though, and maybe I'm just reading these, these two stats wrong. But the spending by accommodation type and the visitor's spending by all categories doesn't seem to mesh. When I, I look at the numbers, if you go to the spending by accommodation type, it's around $93 million if you add in the campground, the hotel, the day, and you go, then accommodations page only adds up to about 22 million. And I, I don't know what I'm reading wrong in that. That's, that's too big a discrepancy not to say something.
Okay, the accommodation page?
The accommodation page, visitor spending in all categories, and you, if we drop down what is spent on accommodations is significant, but it looks like it's about $22 million or so.
Yeah, 21.2.
But then you flip two pages further, spending by accommodation type, and we have private campgrounds and hotels and motels and, and regular campgrounds. If you add all those up, you see what I mean?
Yeah.
Private campgrounds alone are 36 million, and hotels and motels are, looks like about 34 million.
Yeah, on this chart here, private campground is actually 34.8, and that does include RV parks. And then hotel motel is approximately 34 million.
You see the difficulty I'm having?
Yeah, I do.
It's the difference between $22 million in total, and then when you add all those different types up, it's several times that.
There has to be an explanation there, I'm sure, Mr. Holly. I will go back and, and look at the report that I read and downloaded the statistics from.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, no, I see, I see what you're talking about. Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't match.
Okay, well, thank you.
And I, I just don't know...
Just blame it on Dean.
Yeah, just blame it on Dean. I don't know if maybe, because it says visitor spending at destination by commodity purchased as opposed to visitor spending at destination by type of accommodations. So, I'm gonna have to get some clarification by what a commodity purchased is.
Either way, it's clear.
Either, either way, there's a, yeah, they're not the same number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Yes? Did you have any comments?
No.
Did you have any?
No.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Palmer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's our presentation. Let's go on to communications. This is the public comment period of time. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted also. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include the placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition, please state your name and whether you're a city-county resident for our records, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Yes. What's this?
He just made it worse. I need some vitamin D. Sorry.
All right. Donna Westfall, I live in the city. The bursting of the U.S. housing bubble, which peaked in 2006, caused the values of securities tied to real estate to plummet, damaging financial institutions globally. By 2007, we were in a recession, and the residents and business owners told our city leaders publicly and privately this was the case, and it wasn't a good time to encumber us to tune up $40 million on the sewer project. Now we know why the city should have listened. Former Public Works Director Jim Barnes gave a presentation to the city council on February 5th, 2007, on how to finance the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. During his presentation, he included the user base listing out the number of sewer users. If his information was accurate, at that time, the city had 3857 users. Jim Barnes, in the Will Dan Report, projected growth. In reality, you have a shrinking population. Also, you were told that the maintenance on the MBO is very expensive. How expensive, you probably don't even know. Last year before the city council, Eric Weir gave reports stating the city had 4,500 sewer customers. Last week, the city gave me a paper showing the city only had 3,850. You have no significant changes in your customer base the last six years. Mayor Aneah, when you said that we, if we had increased the sewer rates on the original schedule, we wouldn't be in a deficit situation, that's inaccurate. The system will continue to run at a deficit because the city is not growing, new businesses are not starting up, new construction is out of virtual standstill. While the city continues to spend money fiddling around trying to make the sewer plant work right, because you've been dealing with huge maintenance costs, are they in reality design errors? I have to ask if the contractors on the job aren't responsible for some of these issues instead of once again trying to put this on the back of the ratepayers by continuing to raise sewer rates. In March 2010, Mike Young wrote, "The sewer plant is nearing completion of the first phase of a major improvement which will provide over 1,000 single-family residential equivalent connections," or SFRE. For those on the council that don't understand SFRE, as you look at the customer base list, you'll see, for example, one hospital, Sutter Coast, uses the equivalent of 112 SFREs. When you hooked up to the harbor, to the sewer plant, that's the equivalent of 1,100 SFREs. It looks to me as though the city has already used up its projected 1,000 FFREs when it put the harbor online. So has the city shot itself in the foot. To conclude, on May 1, the sewer rates will be nearly $70 a month, and there's no end in sight, and that's why I say sewer rates stink in Crescent City.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
My name's Richard Miles, and I'm here tonight to bring up an issue that I think is a little more positive than what Donna Westfall just brought up. In the Senate, there is a bill, and that bill is Senate Bill 405. It has to do with single-use carryout bags. Today, even the California Grocery Association signed on to this bill. As a coastal community, it doesn't take too much to realize you just need to go to Beach front Park, especially on the ass curve to see plastic bags blown all over the place. I would like my city to write a letter to Wes Chesbrough and to our senator to encourage the passage of this bill. The reason is, out in the ocean, there is a big patch of this plastic waste. And what's happening, because I read an article in American Pride, which comes with the Curry pilot, I mean, the Brookings pilot over the weekend, that our fish are consuming this plastic, and it's getting into the food chain. Throughout the coastal communities of California, which we are one, our fishing fleet is fishing, and these fish are being caught that are consuming these plastics. It's getting into the food chain. So what I'd like to do, because I don't want to waste your time tonight, is give the clerk this material, and I would hope that the city would write the appropriate parties, and that, Mr. Anea, this item also should be brought before the Solid Waste Authority.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Elaine Cooper, Delano County. Right now, the city is looking for a new assessment for the sewer treatment plant of a new rate study. And I'd just like to be aware of some things that happened wrong with the previous rate One big-ticket item that I see was an estimate for the MBR. That's by far the most expensive part of the plant. That, when you actually go to look at the bid, that was off by 200, 240 percent. For some reason, the city accepted a bid that was probably double than their estimate. So when it comes to actual items of maintenance, I don't know if I can really trust that the new rate study, based on our local engineering assessment, if it's anything like the first one, we're not going to be, we're going to come up with some maybe nasty surprises like we did the first time, and just be very leery about the accuracy of these rate studies. Because we end up, you know, paying the price later. And some ideas about encouraging smart growth. Usually, we think of growth as more out, but that's not a smart way to do it, because in the end, we, the ratepayers, incur structural maintenance costs. Every time we put a new sewer pipe out to outlying areas, that is, becomes a huge burden from here to forever. And so the smart thing to do would be to find a structure that builds up, maybe making a higher cost of hookup for those putting in the long lines, and reducing anyone who wants to utilize the infrastructure we have right now in the city. So discourage sprawl, encourage up, because we don't need any more maintenance of lines.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on. Is there one? I'm sorry. Oh, come on up. Come on up, sorry.
My name is Richard, and this is to the members. How many of you have septic tanks in your house?
There aren't any in the city that I know of.
Do you live in town?
Yes, we have, we're required to live in the city.
Well, there's people that are getting charged for sewage that have septic tanks still, and I think that's a little unfair, don't you?
If they are getting charged for that, they need to contact the city to see why.
There's quite a few people that are getting charged for sewage. You know that they have their own septic system. You know, I don't think that's very fair to the common people that are here in the Alvinians that, you know, work hard for their living. And there's even places in town that have septic tanks, that they still get charged for sewage. You know, that's kind of discrimination, don't you think? Being a, I know out there at the Pacific shores, you guys were charging people for water out there at Pacific shores on their taxes, but I don't see no water being put in out there.
No, we weren't doing that, sir.
Well, the county was.
No, this is the city. We were not doing that.
Thank you.
But if anybody is being charged on a sewer bill that's using a septic-only, please contact the City Hall. I don't know of anybody in the city that has septic. Okay, any other public comment? Yes.
My name is Janice Wilson. It's my understanding that if a person has city water, they're actually being charged for the sewer. Goes along, coincide with that. For the common good of all people, I really hope that each and every one of you really step back and give this a thorough thought for the common good of all people in our community. We all are part of what brings great things to the city, and as a unit, we actually provide that, because we believe in a future, in a good, healthy future, not just for our visitors, but for one another. So in saying that also, I really hope that you totally look at that sewer situation, the entirety of what these ladies were sharing, what he was saying, and really not use any partial judgment or notion or idea on the outside appearance, just really look at the facts, from the common person all the way to the visitors that may be getting a little increase in what the cost of their visit is. That sewer situation is just as precious as the water source when it comes to the impact on the public and the public interest. For those who people can not, have not participated or been able to be aware to such a serious manner, I hope that each and every one of you consider that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I don't see any this time. I'll close public comment. We're going to move on to item eight, and that is to adjourn from the council meeting for a few minutes and go to the Housing Authority.
Mr. Anea, can I make a comment first?
Sure.
Thanks. I wanted to address a couple things. Ms. Westfall brought up that there are no new businesses opening, and indeed, in the last month, we've had construction begin for Autozone in the city limits. We've also, I recently just met a young man opening an Italian restaurant in downtown Crescent City. And then also, we've been told that Caesar's Pizza is moving into the KFC building. So there is business that's starting to open again, and it's a good sign for the community, and I'm happy to hear that. And then also, on Ms. Cooper's comment, I wanted to say that a rate study for the water is completely different than a cost estimate for the construction of the sewer treatment plant. So just for future reference, they're two separate things.
Any other council comments? Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the Crescent City Housing Authority, and I'll call that, this meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Board Member Shalung, here. Board Member Gastineau-
Here.
Vice Chair Holly-
Here.
And Chairman Anea.
I'm here. This is the time for public comment on the Crescent City Housing Authority. Is there any public comment on the Housing Authority? Okay, seeing none, we'll go for the consent calendar. One is to approve the regular meeting minutes for March 18, and number two is to approve warrant claims for March 19 through April 15. Is your motion approved?
Move to approve, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you please pull the vote?
Board Member Shalung-
Yes.
Board Member Gastineau-
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly-
Yes.
And Chairman Anea.
Yes, thank you. Housing Directors' Report, I see none. Did you want to say anything? Okay. There's no public hearings tonight, there is no continuing business, so we will adjourn the Housing Authority until our next meeting, which will be May 20, 2013. Okay, we'll go from the Housing Authority, and we'll adjourn to the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. I think I said that right for the first time. So I'll call that meeting to order, and would you please take a roll?
Board Member Gastineau-
Here.
Board Member Shalung-
Here.
Vice Chair Holly-
Here.
And Chairman Anea.
I'm here, and is there any public comment on the successor agency? Seeing none, we will go to the consent calendar. Item one's approval of the regular minutes of March 18, and number two is to approve warrants claim list from March 19 to April 15.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It moved in second. Would you please pull the vote?
Board Member Gastineau-
Yes.
Board Member Shalung-
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly-
Yes.
And Chairman Anea.
Yes. The Executive Directors' Reports, there is none, okay. Business items, there's none. Public hearings, there isn't any. New business, there's none. Let's see. Does any of this, there is new business, I'm sorry, there is new business. Item 11.
Item one.
No, wait, that's not for the successor agency, right? That's okay.
Like, we only have two items. Where are you at?
For once, I didn't make a mistake. Okay. Does any member of the board want to have anything to report for this agency? Seeing none, we will adjourn the successor agency until May 20, 2013. And now we'll go back to the City Council meeting, and we're on item number 10, public hearing. And no public hearing, no continuing business, under new business, item 11. We're there. Mr. Blotsoe.
I'd ask Mr. Weir to make a presentation on this item.
Mr. Weir.
Mayor Anea, members of the council. So yes, what's before you tonight is to adopt a policy to standardize the memorial bench program for the city. The goal of this program would be to ensure consistency, as well as have a mutual understanding between the applicant and the city in regards to the bench design, the location, future maintenance, removal, as well as the cost to the applicant. The bench style would be selected by the city. This is to ensure consistency with our street scape theme, as well as maintenance concerns, to ensure that the bench would be low maintenance. The plaque that would memorialize the particular person the applicant's trying to memorialize would be, would also be chosen by the city, such that we have consistency, and a consistency in size as well. The applicant can then customize the plaque, but it would be approved by the city manager and Public Works Director. All costs of this program would be borne by the applicant. This would be on a time and material basis, so it would be the actual cost for the city to install the bench. Certain locations might require maybe a placement of a foundation pad, so that way this ensures that we would go out with the applicant, look at the site, let them know what the cost would be, and then they would pay for it.
Okay.
That's that.
Any council?
I was just going to ask if the benches are going to be comparable to what we've already placed?
They would be, as far as a concrete bench goes. I mean, that's what we've typically placed. It was the thought that we would take the actual style to the planning commission, and then they would choose the style going forward.
Okay, good.
So the way I understand this, Mr. Weir, is that if someone wanted to do that, they would fill out the application, and then if it's approved, then they would pay the city, and the city would order the bench from a company, right?
Correct.
The city would do, would order it?
Correct. We would, yes, we would prepare an estimate for them, and that would include the cost of the bench, as well as an estimate for the time it would take us to actually install the bench.
Okay.
And then they would pay the city, and the city would take care of the ordering, such that we do control the style, so we have consistency.
And you would approve, the city would approve the location as close as possible to where the people want it?
Correct.
Because I see with Front Street Park and the Dog Park, we're probably going to get requests for benches. Some might not be in appropriate location exactly.
That's correct, and that's another reason why we wanted to have a program in places, because, you know, with Beachfront Park master plans and just the fact that things do change over time, we wanted to be able to relocate the benches, you know, as needed.
Any council member comments?
Just, someone approached me about locations, and does the person getting the memorial get to kind of help select the location of the bench, or?
Correct. How we've set it up in this program is that they would, they would choose three locations that they would like, and then we'll, as a city, go out and look at the locations and try to accommodate them the best we can.
And speaking of accommodation, the same person was saying that they're concerned, because some of the benches that are out in the county are nice benches, but they aren't accessible to anyone that has to walk over a small, low-lying fence, or up the rocks at Whalers Island, or whatever. Is that something that we could take into consideration as well?
Sure, that would definitely be a consideration, is the accessibility of the bench.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. Is there any public comment on these policies for the memorial benches? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council to consider adopting a policy for the dedication placement of the memorial benches.
I will move to approve adopting the policy for the memorial benches for the city of Crescent City.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Passes four to nothing unanimously. Item number 12, this is to review and approve a contract to provide administrative services for the State Community Block Grant, also known as CDBG, program for Adams Ashby Group. Mr. Blotsoe.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Ken McDonald to-
Good evening, Mr. McDonald.
Hello.
Thank you for waiting.
No problem. Moved relatively quickly. What we did is, we had our current CDBG administrative provider, Charlene Maisy, her contract expired at the end of March. We had to put together an RFP to search for a new party. We got three proposals. We interviewed two of the top proposers that were in there, Charlene Maisy and Adams Ashby Group. We reviewed all their skills, checked their background, personally interviewed them, and had established that Adams Ashby Group will fit more into our long-term goals for bringing the city back to managing and administering all the grants in-house. I think that was the case about five years ago. We had lost some staff and some experience, and so we went into this administrative process. We have one grant that we haven't gotten the funds released yet, but we've been awarded. That one's the big one- That one's the big one that's gonna have a Second Street Sewer Project and three social service components. We have a current economic development grant, it's a renewal of the past one. And then we have two other grants that are closing. One is expiring in June, and the other one is expiring as late as December. We have one of the two principals, there's Paul Ashby and Lori Adams. We have Lori Adams here in the audience, if there's any questions that anybody would like to bring up to her. Any of the other questions on this, I'd be more than happy to address to the best of my ability.
You know, I may have missed it, is this three years?
We, three years is the maximum length that HCD would allow or recommend. We have opted for a two-year contract in this, in this term, with the lofty goal of within 24 months being up to speed and able to handle the transition ourselves.
Two-year, okay. Any other council comments right now?
I just wanted to say that I, I talked to Ken and, and Mr. Palazzo about this today. My initial concern was changing midstream, because I feel that Charlene's done an excellent job for the city. Some of the grants that we will be passing on to the winning bidder will actually be grants that were written and secured by Charlene. I'm also a big proponent of keeping our business local. And so, I had those direct questions for our staff, and I was satisfied with the answers. And I just wanted to share those, because I think they're important. And one is that, on top of the fact that one of, I think, our long-term goals, and I think it's based on a ruling that was recently come out from CDBG, for us to start handling this in-house, was that we are, we're, we're handling a lot of grants right now. And part of the problem that we've recently had, and the question that I followed up with was that, one of our current grants, there's nothing left in the grant, and yet, there's still $7,500 in expenses to be paid out to close the grant. And that's a concern to me. And so, my question then, to the Adams Ashby Group would be, you know, how are we going to address that in the future? And what kind of tracking are we going, are they going to, going to be able to provide to the cities that we don't get into that situation again?
Yeah, and what they have in the contract that's, that's in front of you, each different grant or, or contract that we have with HCD, which is the State Department of Housing and Community Development, each one has its own separate addendum. So, what they've put in there is their hourly rate is $10 an hour cheaper than, than our last one, but they've put in amount that they would charge as a maximum.
Not to exceed.
Yeah, it's like a not to exceed. We're, I think this will be more of a reflection on how well staff is progressing, if we don't get to those maximum numbers. Some of the existing grants that are expiring in June, and, and the one in December, those ones are probably not quite the same, because they're already in full string, and we won't really be able to get up to speed in two or three months for those. But some of the other ones, we will, we'll have, we're hoping to be able to complete substantially the current C12, 2012 CDBG grant that we just got awarded, because they have an annual application period that's right about now, it's in April of every year. So, we're hoping to be able to be to that point next year, and, and apply for the next round of funding. So, I think we'll have a little bit more experience, we'll probably have Adams Ashby Group assist us with preparing that application, if not preparing it completely. So, I think with that training, we should see in the next nine months, we should start seeing some fruit-bearing from that, those efforts.
Right. And, yeah, and to follow up, they have extreme, extensive background and experience, and I think that they really are going to be able to hand this off to the staff a lot more efficiently, so.
They also have some experience in some other areas with USDA funding and, and different items, that we have a pretty extensive capital improvement plan we have for both our water and sewer utilities. So, as those opportunities come up, we may be looking to them for some grant and loan opportunities to complete some more of these capital projects. Not to mention, they've been through several monitorings. One of the monitoring from the state HCD to a city that I had contacted had commented that their records and systems were not really in the best of shape. Adams Ashby Group got, got there, got them all lined up, and their comments from HCD was they've never seen a, a city so organized. So, that's kind of our lofty goals, we're hoping to be that organizational level and, and go from there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I'll undertake a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve the contract to provide administrative services for the state CDBG grant program with Adams Ashby Group.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, would you pull the vote, please?
Councilmember Shalung.
Yes.
Councilmember Gastineau.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holly.
Yes.
And Mayor Ania.
Yes, and with that, I'd like Mrs. Adams to come up and say a few words. And I do have a question. So, you're on a two-year contract to leave after you train our city staff.
Amen. Yes.
Right answer.
Well, just so you have a little bit of background, I come from public service and working as a city clerk, managing grants in-house, myself hired and fired all the consultants. So, my process of thinking is you can't service your community better than you, or I can't service your community better than you. There's a value that I bring to the table. I don't believe I ever work myself out of a job, because there's jobs that you want your staff to do, and there's other things that you don't want them to worry about or mess with. So, my goal is to minimize my service, but always be there to help you, and to help you put projects together, finance them from vision all the way through construction, and make sure that you don't miss a beat, so you don't eliminate your opportunity for funding in the future.
Can I ask how many cities your group works with?
Right now, we have 18 clients, although they're not all functioning with, you know, large projects. But we service 18 different communities, so.
Any council? Welcome.
All right, well, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to bringing the capacity to your staff to the level for them to be effective with your, with your funding, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that, that was item number 12. Next is city council items. Are there any legislative matters, Mr. Palazzo? You know what, we do have one, don't we?
You have one in the packet.
That was to consider, that's to consider and approve the League of California's proposed amended bylaws. And that's on, just passed, it's on number 13. And I don't know if you had a chance to look at this, but it's to change the bylaws at the league to re, that says that resolutions submitted to the league for presentations to the general assembly, remember, that's that last morning that we're there, must be concurred by at least five or more cities, or by city officials from at least five or more cities. So, I, I take that, I was gonna ask Mr. Black about that. So, five city managers can sign off on it.
That's the way I read it.
Or five councils can sign off it, on it, as long as they're different than the city managers.
Right.
And that, I, I guess the reason for that is, so they don't get resolutions, and nobody's gonna vote, that one city just wants for themselves. And we've seen that before on those meetings. And the second part of it is the league may take a position on a statewide ballot measure by two-thirds vote of those directors' presence. Currently, the board may take it with a simple majority. My read on that is there's some ballot measures that are very controversial for them to approve, and some pit the north part of the state to the south, and so they want a better-than-majority, they want two-thirds. That's at their board meetings, that there's, I think there's 19 board members. So, do we agree with those, those two?
I do.
Okay, that's consensus, then, we will sign that. Mr. Palazzo, do you have something?
I, I have.
Did you wanna vote on, is it a resolution?
No, I don't.
Just consensus with the ballot.
No, it's not a resolution. Okay, so we will, I'll sign that. I'll sign that. You can mail it.
And I have no other items.
Okay, no other items, okay. Okay, so then, let's go to reports, concerns, referrals, or council travel. I'll start with Mr. Gastineau.
I actually did something.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I, I was at the downtown Crescent City bid meeting on the 3rd, and I got a, besides helping them a little bit with choosing their new board members, we had a, a little sneak peek of the Second Street Project from Mr. Weir. It was very interesting, and had a really good thing. And they were talking about also the downtown art walk, so there's some good things there. And then on the 10th, I, I was at the Visitors Bureau, and we're talking about new promotional avenues through website, mobile modifications with Mr. Palmer brought up, and definitely getting out new rack cards to promote our area. And another thing that he didn't mention is that there's gonna be a French delegation of tour promoters and a writer that are touring, touring the North State, and they'll be in Crescent City in mid-May. So, we have, bring out a red carpet and make a really good visit for them.
Okay. Councilmember Shalung?
Thank you. I attended Lisa McCown's ribbon cutting, she's moved to downtown Crescent City, and loves her new office. And the Chamber of Commerce is having their economic summit this Thurs, this Thursday at the Alk Valley Rancheria Community Room, starting at 8:30 in the morning. And we have fabulous round-trip tickets to San Francisco to give away as a door prize incentive for you to attend. And we're also gonna have a, a wide variety of really good updates for the community, such as the status of the broadband project. We've invited representative from Charter Communicate, or, I'm sorry, Charter Business to attend and give the community an update on that project. And also, the airport project will have an update, the Last Chance Grade Highway Project will have an, an update. The city will be doing its presentation, which I'm very excited about. And Jeff could probably, if you wanna pick his brain after the meeting, he can probably fill you in on more of what's going on. We're also already planning for the 4th of July, so if you want to volunteer for the 4th, just get ahold of Jeff as well. And that is about it for this week.
Okay. Councilmember Holly, or Mayor Protem Holly.
Thank you. We went to the Delort Local Transportation Commission, so that had, there was some interesting information there. We received the triennial performance audits for, for the Transportation Commission, and that went very well. Had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Black for an hour, as far as an orientation's concerned. And, and he helped me understand what it is that the council does for us, and, and how, how the, the relationship works between the, the council and our attorney. Also, on that same day, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder.
Go ahead.
But it's our 159th birthday.
Thursday.
Thursday. And so, I know that everybody's real excited about that, I can see it.
We're having cake.
Yes.
We're having, well, that's exciting.
Not cupcakes.
No. But, but that, there'll be a, an art walk after that, and so, I'm looking forward to attending that.
As well as the celebration of the murals on Third Street.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
I also attended the transportation meeting, and, you know, there was some exciting news there about Last Chance Grade. So, Jessica, if they don't tell you how it's progressing on Thursday, call me, and I'll give you the, what percentage it's progressed to. Because a lot of people in Laguna, I don't wanna give it down, wait for Thursday. They gave us a percentage of how far it's completed. So, you can find out Thursday for that. Also, the, I went to the ribbon cutting along with councilmember Shalung, and let me tell you, that office looks really nice, the State Farm office, it looks really good. The mural project, which Harley is here, we're gonna go over that on Thursday, and have him show, show the community what he's done. I think I counted 52 murals. He ran out of space, so we're gonna have to find you some more space. And that's a great, that's a great project, Harley, it really is. And it also involves children, we'll talk about that Thursday, that's at 5:30, I believe. 5:30? 5:30, right?
Okay, good.
And, let's see if I did anything else. Tomorrow, Mayor Protem Holly will be there at, at 1:30 is the groundbreaking for the new Masonic Hall.
It's at 1?
1:30, I'm sorry, 1:30.
No, just 1:00.
Is it 1:00 PM?
I think it's 1:00.
Oh, 1:00 PM, I'm sorry, it's 1:00 o'clock. And that, that's at 9th and C Street, remember, it burned to the ground about a year and a half ago, and now it's gonna be completely rebuilt. And so, that, that groundbreaking is tomorrow at 1:00 PM.
And I'm gonna apologize that I won't be able to be there tomorrow, I have to work out of town tomorrow, so.
And I won't be there either, but.
I'm really bummed about it, so please pass on my apologies.
Well, I, I'm looking forward to being there, it's exciting.